Like we have the green light, so I will call this meeting to order of the Lake Mills City Council for September 3rd, 2024. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmeager?
Here.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes, and we have quite a few minutes to incorporate into our record tonight. We have the city council meeting minutes from August 20th, Plan Commission minutes from May 28th, Parks Board from July 8th, Police and Fire Commission minutes from March 21st and May 13th, and then two sets of minutes from our Anhot Committee on Urban Forest Management from April 10th and April 29th. Are there any questions or corrections on any of those minutes or any comments that council members want to make?
Looks good.
Everybody's comfortable with those? Okay, I'm hearing no comments or questions. We'll accept all of those into our record. So our next item is correspondence, and since I'm looking at Mary, I will ask you to go first.
Thank you. It was kind of a quiet few weeks. I did have a reach out. It was actually a question about the Plan Commission agenda, and that was the concept review from Wangard, and then a second correspondence on the September lake drawdown.
Thank you. Great.
I had an invitation to speak for the Optimist Club in October, and also a complaint about one of the city's properties, but I haven't had a chance to drive by it yet. So I'll hold off on that property until I have a chance.
Okay, thanks. Michelle?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Steve?
I just had a small group discussion about Sandy Beach, with a number of constituents last week.
Great, thank you. So I'll just add or reinforce, I think we all received a press release from Drake regarding the Rock Lake fall drawdown that's ongoing right now. I received correspondence as a Plan Commission member regarding the Wangard Partners Project. That's the property across from Tyronina Park, and some of you may have heard of that. As Mary said, there was a concept plan review at the Plan Commission last week, so if you're interested, you can, you know, check out that recording. There was a number of citizens that made comments, but that's working its way through the process and is not at the council level yet. And then I received some campaign materials from Jennifer Quimby. Okay. Next, we'll move on to questions and public comments. So this is the time on the agenda where the public is encouraged to address the council regarding items that are on the agenda. Public comments can also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. And if there's anyone attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature if you would like to speak. So is there anyone here in the room who would like to address the council this evening? Please step forward.
I usually like to let other people speak first if they're...
I didn't see any other hands go up, so...
But at least you have people here. You know, we get lonely at city council, too. My name is Jenny Quimby, 790 Lexington Way out of Waterloo. I'm the mayor of Waterloo, and I'm running for State Assembly 46 in this new district. And like you, I know what it feels like to sit back there, so I promised to keep this very short. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've been on city council since 2008, served on the school board since 2011, and was elected first mayor in 2019, and I'm currently the mayor. I'm running for city council because I care about all things municipality, and I'm going to all 19 city or town council meetings, and I'm really learning a lot about towns. Your township is just right down the road, you know, and it's basically in your city limits. So anyway, townships are quite huge. And so the things that I'm learning are, we all have a lot of the very same problems, not enough state aid, all need roads, and fire and EMS services are really kind of a struggle. Mr. Daley and I sit in on the Jefferson County meetings. We'll be there again this Friday, and these are conversations that we're having is to try and find better ways to have these services and things taken care of. Lake Mills and Cottage Grove do very well in that new construction. The rest of the districts, not so much. So I'm hoping to be a municipal voice in the assembly and see if there's better ways to have state aid and communication and make things better if I can. So I gave you my information. I could talk for a very long time, but I won't. So if you want to get ahold of me, you can. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during pub comment this evening? Okay, and I don't see anyone online, so we will close that item, and we will move on to Agenda Item 7, which is our City Manager's Report.
As you mentioned, the fall drawdown is beginning this Saturday, and will continue gradually until the 15th to meet the fall maximum level mandated by the DNR. That is the only announcement I have for you tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Drake? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council business. So our first item is Ordinance 1268, which is a zoning amendment request from Jacob Arnt and Gail Oglesby. Misty, would you read that title? This is our first reading this evening.
City of Lake Mills Ordinance 1268, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 246-0713-1223006, owners Jacob Arnt and Gail Oglesby, 805 Linden Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So again, this is the first reading tonight on the ordinance. I wonder if we could just have staff just give an overview of this since you're here, and just give us the background so that then if people have any questions over the next couple readings, we can be prepared.
Okay. This first one here is a recent annexation into the city, and as you guys are aware, we default as an RD zoning when they are annexed in, and then we will go through the rezoning process and give it the proper zoning designation. That's really well this process is. This did go through Plan Commission and was recommended for approval last week. So this one's pretty much just formality.
Okay, thank you. And this, as you said, the Plan Commission recommended approval of this, and it is currently has a single-family home on the property, and I think they're in need of water or sewer or both?
They're in need of sewer, but, you know, we'll end up running water and sewer down that street, and they will, I think they're going to hook up to both water and sewer now, but really their septic is failing was the reason that this was brought to, they had to do something, and they weren't allowed to get another septic system put in, so this was their option to tie into city utilities.
Thanks. And I guess I could add, there was a public hearing also at the Plan Commission, and there was no comments from the public on this one, so. Okay, any questions for our zoning administrator this evening?
Nope.
Okay, so then we will carry this one forward for second reading at our next meeting. So our next agenda item is Ordinance 1269. This is also a zoning amendment request from Sean Topol, and we have the first reading tonight. So Misty, would you do that first reading for us, please?
City of Lake Mills Ordinance 1269, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 246-0713-2314000, owner Sean R. Topol, 1341 Topol Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. And so this again was one that there was no public comment at the public hearing, and the Plan Commission did recommend approval. Troy, do you want to go over this one, the background a little bit?
Sure. This one, being just a little bit different, is Sean's current property, and I'm assuming if you guys are all seeing that certified survey map that they submitted with their application, but he currently has a property that was annexed in a while ago and is still zoned RD, which isn't a proper city zoning for that parcel, but he's going to be buying a piece of property just to the north of his existing property from his brother. I think it's brother. And that's actually zoned R312, and so what they're going to do is rezone that parcel to the R14 and consolidate and create this CSM so he can have a little sliver of property there to access his shed.
Great, thank you. Greg?
So is the additional property already in the city, or is that being annexed into the city?
It's in the city already.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a, I guess, a tangential question. This may be for our city attorney, but it seems like there's a lot of steps when we do an annexation, where we have to go through multiple steps. There are property owners who go through multiple steps, and then it comes in as RD, and then you have to go through multiple steps to do the rezone. Is it legally possible to have someone request an annexation and request the zoning at the time that they requested and just reduce some of the steps that people have to go through?
There's a couple of different opinions on that. The way our ordinances are set up, this has been the practice that has been instituted and kind of honored through time. It's funny that you mention it, because I've brought that specific issue up many times saying, I think this process could be a little bit more efficient. Based on how it's drafted, the planner, who, I mean, Hunt was the zoning administrator prior to Troy, and it's been interpreted, and they drafted the document, that these were all necessary steps. They have convinced me of that in the manner that it is currently drafted, so we've just continued on in that manner.
Okay, thanks. And is that kind of tied to state statutory requirements related to property zoning?
The steps itself, yes. It must come in in an undesignedated fashion, is the interpretation that's been provided to me. That's where RD comes in. It's not really established. Oftentimes, what you see annexed is like vacant green space or something like that, where the final designation is dependent upon the use. The two examples that you see before us right now are a little bit more obvious. As you've pointed out in both examples, there is a single-family residence on them. It is blatantly obvious that R14 is the appropriate designation. So I guess you've hit the crux of the question, whether or not that step can be avoided from going in as RD to the final designation based on their request at the outset, and what has been provided to me is indicative that, no, it's not.
And so I suppose a property that doesn't have a current use, that would be a different scenario?
You go through a planning process, where you're separating out into different typical uses within a property, or, you know, a process to determine that. An example of that would be what you're seeing maybe with the Wangard property, that's gone through different iterations as it's gotten to its final zoning designation of R312, but there hasn't been the plan in front of you that's been kind of approved and is moving forward. I think another example, if and when utilities are extended to the north side of the interstate, you'll see an example where interim zoning is most appropriate as you go through and approve plans to kind of lean into that final designation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Greg?
I see the property owners here. I didn't know if he wanted to speak. By no means does he have to, but it's kind of nice to have property owners here during our discussions.
Gentlemen? He doesn't seem interested. You're welcome to speak. You're not required to.
The one that's wired and one that's off.
Either way.
If you want to come up, yeah, just come up to the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Greg's looking at a spot.
You didn't have to.
I'm Trent Topol. I own Topol's Lakeside Park, 1349 Topol Street in Lake Mills, Wisconsin. When I sold my cousin Sean this property that he's at right now, which is 1341, the property line cut directly in back of his shed. There's no chance that he can even get into his shed in the backside. So after talking to the city and their planners, we tried to square off that lot. So he is available just to get into the back of his shed. So that's all there is.
Good, makes sense.
Any questions?
Thanks. It's always nice to know what the purpose of things are, so thank you so much for that.
Yep, thank you.
So we'll have two more readings, so this will come up again in the next couple city council meetings.
Is there any way to expedite that?
We do have a process for waiving readings. It requires the majority of the council, I believe, to support that, so.
Just asking a question.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to waive a reading? Okay, I'm not hearing one, so I guess this will be on next meeting's agenda. Okay, so our next agenda item is Resolution 24-62, which is related to our capital improvement project. So Misty, would you read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 24-62, Resolution Adopting the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. And this is, there's a lot of documents here. Is somebody prepared to make a motion, or do we want to?
Can we have discussion first?
Yeah, let's have the staff give us an overview and a discussion before we move on to a motion. Thanks.
Sure. So I will just point out a few key points here, and then I'll be available for questions. As we're looking at this document, something that we haven't had to do in the past because they haven't been available, and as we try and make it a more transparent document, you'll see a category called Funding/Grants. That category, while it adds to the total, is grant-funded, and so what we're trying to show you is that while we may need interim financing while we wait for the grant, to be reimbursed for the grant, we're not actually responsible for that final cost. So it would be, if we did have to finance it, it'd be a very short-term borrow. So like, in 2025, when you're looking at the total number at the bottom of that page, you can back out that $4,646,000 out of that number, dropping you to, you know, $10 million, you know, in the $10,600,000 range. And then the second reason that this is a bit higher than its normal is the $3,070,000 for the Sandy Beach restaurant. So when you take that out, you get back into the $7.5 million range, and then when you consider the $1.5 million for the library, you back that out, then you're right back at that $6 million range that we've seen in previous years. And then when you consider that this is divided between general obligation, the municipal side of things, and revenue debt, the utility side of things, we're getting back to, you know, I think, Dwayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but the geo side would be around $3 million. So we're kind of looking at some generational projects, I guess I'll call them, you know, a library expansion, a restaurant project. Those are not typical projects that we see in our CIP, appear in those five-year plans often. So that can provide you some context as to why that bottom number is larger, but if you look at just what we're being, we'd be responsible for in 2025 specifically, you're looking at just over $10,600,000 that we would be financing. That wouldn't be coming back to us relatively quickly through a grant. The other thing I'll mention, in the financing plan, Sandy Beach is included now as a state trust fund loan. The financing plan does include a $75,000 abatement. That's in anticipation of a lease. I just want to be clear to the city council that you're under no obligation to use that revenue to pay the principal and interest payments. So you could use that $75,000 annually for operational expenses if you so chose, if you wanted to assist on the operating side of things. So as you likely know, the city council has most flexibility on the capital and debt side of things. You have much more limited flexibility on the operational side of things because of levy limits. So you could choose to forego using the revenue to pay down the debt levy for that additional $75,000 annually that's currently being abated, and incorporate that into your operating budget as a revenue. That would be a policy decision of the city council if you wanted to add additional flexibility into the operating budget. $75,000 is not an insignificant amount in the operating budget, depending what the priorities of that budget are. So that does exist to you. So other than that, those were the main points I wanted to make sure you were aware of as we began looking through this process. If the city council is looking, is inquiring as to what projects could be delayed, as always, your road reconstruction projects, specifically the ones that are not grant-funded, so your Milton Street and Prospect Street are your most likely candidates for delay because a road that needs to be reconstructed now will need to be reconstructed in whatever year, and there's no preventative maintenance you can do to bring it back to life, so to speak. It will have to be reconstructed when you get to it. So it will always be a reconstruction project. I would note that if you delay them, unless you want to double up on a road project in future years because of the grant-funded projects we have, so we have Harvey in '27, we have South CP Avenue in '28, and then Westlake Park Place in 2029, unless you want to double up on projects, if you delay a Milton or a Prospect, you might be looking until 2030 for when those get completed, if you wanted to reduce what you're doing. So a lot of the increases you'll see in years does have to do with the Sandy Beach redevelopment, so you'll see numbers in there for the parking lot. You'll see there's a 2025 and a 2026, as well as, you know, beachfront improvements in 2026 as well. We can shuffle those around a little bit, perhaps. Dwayne and I have spoken about those numbers for the parking lots, and we ultimately kept them the same as the estimates that we had previously, but basing it off of the restaurant bids, it's possible that those are low, just depending on what, you know, concrete and asphalt prices do. So those are some of the things that are on our horizon and that we're grappling with. So it's all a matter of what we want to prioritize and what is important to us in any given year. So if there's any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Troy, I just wanted to ask a couple follow-up questions to some of the things that you said, and then certainly open up the floor. When you talked about the $75,000 estimated revenue for the Sandy Beach restaurant and how that could be used for operational expenses, I'm assuming that we would need to be cautious about that. We wouldn't want to like hire an employee, because then what if we don't have that revenue going on every year? Would you think that that should be used for something other than staffing or?
That would certainly be the more, nothing would prohibit you from using it towards an employee, but you're right, if a restaurant ceased functioning for a certain time, if that lease revenue disappeared for whatever reason, you would be out that revenue, and you'd have to backfill it or reduce your service level. There are things, there are certainly things within the city that it could be applied towards that would be easier to back out of the budget beyond an employee that may not be excellent candidates for capital borrowing. You know, you could use it as technology replacement, fence replacement, ball field upgrades, other projects within the Parks Department that you may want to apply it towards, maintenance items. You could use it to, I know that the urban forest has been on the mind of the city council. You could use it to help the forestry staff catch up on tree trimming and contract out for assistance on tree trimming. So you could use it for things like that, that if the funding disappeared, you could just stop doing what you're doing.
Stop that contract or whatever. Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And then when you talked about things that could be delayed in the road projects, can you clarify what you mean when you say if we don't want to double up? Like, what would be the?
Do two road.
Yeah, but what would be the implications of that? Why would we or wouldn't we want to do two road projects in the same year?
Increased disturbance to traffic within the city, or simply the expense of doing two road projects. So we do have funding for those, but as far as the road, 20% of the road work is still ours. It's not clear if the DOT will offer us any inflationary escalators. So by the time we get to those years, what was 80% funded may be 75%, 70% funded, so our share will go up. So you'll just, instead of maybe having a break in those capital expenditures that you may have been anticipating because we got a grant-funded road project, you would instead increase that investment in roads in that given year.
Okay.
So nothing prohibits you from doing that, and it may even be advisable to do it sooner, but if the council has concerns about the top-line numbers, the amount that we're financing, borrowing, or projects we're completing in a given year, then that would come into your consideration, I would think.
Okay, thank you. So we had a lot of materials to review here, so we had attached to our agenda. We have a summary of the projects by department, then we have that 180-some page details of all of the projects and their justifications, and then we have a financing plan along with the resolution. So I guess I'll open up the floor if people have any questions, or did everybody have time to read and digest, you know, the information?
On the detail one, I know that's new, and it'll keep improving every year, but the goal was that when you look at the summary sheet, it can sometimes be difficult to tell exactly what that is for. So the goal eventually is to have, you can find a project in the summary sheet, and then go find its detail sheet if you have additional questions, or a member of the public can, and you can go read what it is, why it's necessary, where the funding is expected to come from, hopefully some pictures. If it's an equipment replacement or a road reconstruction, hopefully some pictures of the existing conditions. So it's a lot of pages right now, but again, this is the first year that we're kind of rolling it out, so it's a little rough around the edges, but we'll hopefully every year get more and more refined as we move through it.
Thank you.
Should we just have Dwayne start on page one?
No. I've had a long day. Michelle? I appreciated the detailed analysis, and for anyone who's listening who may not know, you can hit Ctrl+F, and it brings up the Find. So if you're looking for something specific that you see on the breakdown, but you want to know more details of it, you can put it into the Find, and boom, it brings you to that document right away. I do have some questions about the priority level number and where, how that ties into exactly how or what year that particular purchase falls in. Can you help me understand that a little bit, or is it wonky?
The priority number is one of our work in progresses, so I wouldn't put a ton of weight into it right now.
Okay.
Eventually, yes. Essentially, you would, you know, one would be kind of, you know, a mandated project, imminent failure of something that needs to be completed, a consent order if there were one, something that you definitely have to do, or there will be a significant impact on operations, and then it would kind of move down from that severity downward. And, you know, like, depending, in future years, depending, you probably, unless it was, I'm just trying to think, you know, something that was a five, probably doesn't appear in the next year's CIP perhaps, but the priority listing is not super refined at this point in time.
Okay. That was my only real qualm.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that exact same topic, on the importance level? I just was curious about, you know, the materials back in 2018, 19 regarding that mobile home park on Sandy Beach was, it gives me the impression that the sense of urgency for significant failure was extremely high, and that that was really one of the most concerning areas of infrastructure, and we're not starting the east, West Loop in '27 and the East Loop till '28. And so that just caught my attention. I know it's, you're working from the lake back towards '89. I know you're working from in to out, but I'm wondering what your thoughts are on the risks that we're taking by waiting so many years to get after that, and is there a way to change the order?
There is. There certainly is a risk. The infrastructure is largely unknown as to what's under there. It's in what we believe to be poorer conditions, so there certainly is a risk. Each year, Eric deals with sewer backups and things of that nature that he has to mitigate and resolve. You can move it up. The reason it is set up this way, based on my understanding of past conversations, is the goal was to get the parking lot done. is the goal was to get the parking lot done and then establish a parking utility in order to generate revenue that could fill the revenue hole left by not having any lease revenue from the Sandy Home, Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park. So you'll be out when, if you did the whole thing in one year, which I'm not sure the whole thing in one year is possible, but if you did the whole thing in one year, you will see a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar hole in your budget. That will be, of revenue that'll be gone. You could choose to backfill that with surplus for a year in order to not feel that and not have another revenue source. So that's really the only way you could do that without having a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar hole in your budget from not having that lease revenue. This way was not having to backfill, but creating a new source of revenue that would generate, the parking utility would generate in order to keep the city whole while it completed the improvements.
Maybe I'll just make a, I guess, question or comment to follow up on that then. So I think another reason for redoing the parking and having a parking utility is the inefficiency of collecting the beach fees now and maybe not, not fully collecting, you know, all the revenue we could be. And so that doing it through the parking might be a way to be, you know, more sort of accurate and fair.
Yeah, that would be, that's, that's an added, I guess, an added operational benefit. If we transitioned to a pay-for-parking, um, uh, operation instead of a pay-to-enter operation, we no longer need to staff that gatehouse and we no longer need to ask, you know, high school-aged temporary employees, and we don't ask them to essentially confront people that are walking by them. It's not what we consider to be a, we, they ask, you know, they'll say, you know, this is, you know, have you paid or are you going to pay? But if there's an argument to be had, for safety reasons, we don't ask those employees to confront beachgoers and enter into a confrontation. So yes, there is an operational benefit to no longer relying on that mechanism for revenue collection at Sandy Beach.
Any other questions? Greg?
You had outlined that if we take out the library in the Sandy Beach projects, that it drops the amount quite significant. The library, I, I have a good handle on the Sandy Beach project. Library, what's the likelihood that that would happen this, during this two thousand twenty-five time period?
Well, I believe we submitted a strong application, but it's probably one of the most competitive grants in the state. I haven't confirmed this, but I have heard from, I have heard anecdotally that eighty-five library projects submitted across the state for the Flexible Facilities Program Grant. I think we're competitive. I think it's, I think, I'd like to remain optimistic that we will receive it. But there is certainly the potential that we won't.
But would it, even if we did receive it, would the construction fall into twenty-five or would it be more of a twenty-six project?
Our money has to go first in the grant. So the grant is reimbursable, so we, we, we would be paying first. I'd have to ask Gerard, but I believe there are, um, construction deadlines and completion deadlines we have to meet. So I believe we would need to start in twenty twenty-five, to some degree at least.
I'm just trying to understand if both projects would fall during the same year.
They would split, but we anticipate the portion that would flow into twenty twenty-six, I think, the grant would start reimbursing and we would have that benefit.
Okay.
We anticipate there to be, projects start in twenty-five.
And was there more besides that library grant that would come off this number? Was there something with the, um? See, I should have had that start.
There was three or four lines, I think, on that grant, um, under that grant's heading.
If the library project didn't happen, you would see the, um, the one-point-seven million come out of twenty twenty-five. But those, that one-point-seven and the four-point-six are the only library project-related items in the CIP, both in twenty twenty-five.
Oh, and also the special assessments?
Correct.
Will be, they'll be assessed or will they be?
There's an abatement for that, so let me go to the.
I believe that's Linden.
Linden, Linden, the special assessments would be for, that's the annexation that you, that was before you tonight for first reading. That would be the assessment for the extension of, um, the sewer utility, sewer and water.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Craig, do you have timing on these grants when we might hear for our budgeting purposes?
The, all of the, the library grant is the only one we don't know of for sure. The other ones are awarded and will be entering into our agreements with the DOT this month on them. October is the date we are given on the Flexible Facilities Grant for the library. They didn't give a specific date, but they said in October we will hear the results and if it was awarded.
Okay, thank you.
So typically we approve our budget in November. We start talking about it in September and October, but we don't usually approve it till November so that we may know the outcome of that grant then at that time. Okay.
Oh, and I should add that in Public Works, this was approved to come forward to council unanimously.
I'm curious, you mentioned Public Works. I have a note around where, is there funding for a wastewater treatment plant? I don't see it any year at all. And so how do we address that?
It's not in there because we don't know when we're doing it and what we're doing. So no, it is not included in the CIP right now.
And that would come on the revenue bond side for utility borrowing?
Correct. So it'll, it won't affect our debt capacity on the GO side, but it certainly will be a significant project for the city.
I have a question about, I'm noticing that there's quite a lot of expenditures for, and I understand, because I read through them all, the grounds and facilities department having to do with, I know that the, the things having to do with Sandy Beach are, are on the docket for twenty-five, but I've also noticed that there's quite a few things that, I'm wondering if it can be pushed further on? But, because they're all lined up to be paid out on twenty-five and that seems like a lot. Just wondering if some, some dissemination of those costs could happen over the next four years? I know some of them are urgent. I get that, but, um.
We could probably identify some that could be replaced. Some of them, I think the, um, the council will want to see occur, like the boat launch repair, the swim pier replacement, things like that. That there'd be significant service reductions if we don't complete those projects. But we could identify, um.
I mean, they're pretty small in price compared to the millions, but I just didn't know if that would be.
But I have, I have a list of, I have a list of rankings from Director Schreiner that if the council wanted me to identify some projects to remove, to delay, we could.
I actually had a little bit different perspective on that, looking at kind of the overall totals by department and comparing that to some of the budgets that we've approved in the last few years. I see us making a considerable investment in our parks and forestry, in this plan, even pulling the Sandy Beach Restaurant out of, out of that. I think that's really good because I think we, we have not invested as much in our parks as, as I would like to see us do. So I actually liked seeing a lot of that on the list. I mean, if we really feel like there are some things that can, you know, be bumped here if we're concerned about the overall amount of borrowing in the first year, I think we could look at those. But as you said, Michelle, I think a lot of those are pretty small-ticket items, whereas a restaurant is three million dollars. And so that's, I think, is really a, a big part of what we have to weigh.
I think where I'm coming from is like, it's just knowing that there's this looming cost of possibly, you know, certain things coming down the line and I'm wondering if there would be any way that we could kind of just spread that pain out a little bit more because if we look at the bottom totals, I mean, there's a big, I know that Sandy Beach is a lot. But there is a significant difference between twenty twenty-five and let's say twenty twenty-seven, right? It looks like twenty twenty-seven's full investment is half of the cost of twenty twenty-five. And I'm just wondering if there was any way that we could kind of just spread it out. I don't know. I'm not running the show. I just thought, thinking about monies.
Well, I mean, we kind of are running the show. I mean, the five of us get to, you know, get to sort of approve this, but yeah.
So it is, um, when you back out the four-point-six million out of that fifteen million, and then you'd have to back out in twenty twenty-seven, that's Harvey Road, the four-hundred, and we're getting into the grant out of that. So it is larger, but it's more in somewhere between two and three million dollar difference instead of being double because of the way that it's reading right now, which, um, we are looking at ways to make it clearer. It's just we have not had the grant funding in years past to try and present to the City Council. So when you take out that library grant out of that fifteen million, that number starts to get a lot closer to the other ones.
The, the four-point-six part?
Yeah. Um, so the, you get closer to, it still is less every year. There's no doubt about that. But it's not, it's not as stark as it looks on this page.
Okay. And if we don't get the four-point-six million library grant, then we don't have the one-point-seven million dollar commitment that the council's made. So that really takes that down more than six million dollars.
Right.
Greg?
I guess as I look at it and backing out the library in Sandy Beach, I think it's a pretty fair number. I, I see that a lot of the departments have sharpened their pencil for twenty-five and I took note of that. When I look at twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's where I have more concern is a lot of those things moved into that bucket. And that's where, I know we're only approving twenty-five tonight, but twenty-six and twenty-seven, I think maybe we need to look at in the future as far as sharpening our pencils a little bit there.
Can you tell me what that means?
Sharpening pencils?
Yeah.
It means that we may need to look at our cost and tighten things up and move them maybe to another year down the road.
Thanks.
But we've got to be careful moving things down the road because we could get additional costs. So we have to make sure we pick the right projects for that.
Well, and that was my thinking too, was, you know, in thinking about kind of bringing things down the, down the line, we also have, like what Mary was saying, the wastewater treatment plant looming. We don't know, and that could be in the next four years, but we don't know. And so it's, it's a little intimidating, but either way, we're just looking at twenty twenty-five for today, so.
Twenty twenty-six is a difficult year when we're looking at projects and that. You've still got some Sandy Beach parking lot in there. You do have beachfront improvements that could maybe be a candidate for delay if you didn't want to do multiple Sandy Beach projects in one year. But the, the main driver, a big driver we have is Prospect Street's a very high-cost road reconstruction. I think it's close to two million dollars in total or maybe over two million dollars according, Miss, Dwayne's giving me the higher number signal. So that's a expensive road reconstruction that is, been identified.
One of the things I was noticing in this report, and as you said, I mean, the hundred and eighty pages is a lot to digest, but it is a big improvement, I think, in terms of the, compared to the information that we've gotten in the previous years that I've been on the council, and it's more transparent. So it gives you a lot more information. It gives any citizen who wants to look at a lot more information about what we're buying, why we're buying it. And one of the things I really want to compliment all the department heads on is I, I think, well, there was a few exceptions where I felt like the justification was a little bit vague, but for the most part, I thought there was good justification. And I really appreciated both Randy and Eric in the Public Works and the Parks and Forestry really looking at, um, you know, sick cycles, life cycles of equipment and really trying to pace things, you know, spread things out. And, and I'm sure, you know, we have done that to a certain extent in the past, but I see it a little bit more clearly in this budget than I have in previous ones. One of the things that struck me is, or I was curious about is whether we are behind maybe in some of that vehicle replacement or it's just a coincidence of maybe some things got, a lot of things got brought close together in the past and so that now they're all, you know, coming due for replacement. But it looks like we're going to be buying a new squad every year. I mean, at, based on the, you know, the rates, another pickup for forestry every year. You know, it just, it just looks like that's kind of the pace that we need to stay on to make sure that our equipment is safe and, you know, in good condition for operations.
I've interrupted Dwayne a few times now, so he's been trying to break in, so.
Dwayne, what would you like to share about?
Just a couple of comments on things that have been said tonight. Sandy Beach. Back to Mary's question about Sandy Beach, there are some other things. There is also a lift station that is in twenty-six as well for over a million dollars. That is another concern as well as the trailer park sewer and water facility that really drove that, that plan. And Drake explained it well with the parking utility. But note that there's a, there is a lift station there that is limping along as well as the system, the sewer and water system. To Greg's question, there are a number of projects, obviously that Prospect Street that, that Drake mentioned is two-point-six million, but then that lift station is over one million as well. So when you take away those two projects from that total in twenty-six, that number drops pretty significantly as well. Thank you.
We, and we have, in the, in the, I guess, vehicle realm, and I mentioned this to the Public Works Board is, Dwayne has kind of spearheaded with a lot of, with a lot of assistance from Randy and our other department heads. We're, we're creating essentially an entire asset list and making sure we know what vehicles we have, what their year, what their year was, what their hours of operation or their mileage, you know, VIN numbers, you know, information so that we can track and get these vehicles onto a sustainable vehicle replacement schedule. So that's been a priority as we've been further developing the capital improvement plan. I've spoken to Randy a few times about the Public Works Department and I think there may be a, a, what's the word to put it? An, an equipment scarcity and urgency in, in, in some of those and that may, perhaps we are a little behind or under-equipped in, in some areas that he's been looking at and identifying. We have transitioned to, um, this process now bubbles up to me. So it starts at foreman level, employee level, and comes up through the department heads, gets to me. And then I take a broader, I guess, look at everything to make sure that it's fitting within the general goals of the, of the city and also financially that I let them know when they need to go back and reduce. So that's kind of the process that's come forward. So we have more of a, I guess, front staff look at what do they need to do their jobs? What, where do they see the deficiencies? Where do they see, is there pieces of equipment that they're not using, that they don't need? Others that could make them more efficient, that could be better? Pieces of equipment that they know are limping along or struggling or, or should be a higher priority to be replaced? So we've added in kind of the frontline experience into the evaluation for those priorities as well, rather than just this is the oldest vehicle and it's up for its turn. So there's a number of different evaluative tools we're using as we try and get onto a sustainable path for what equipment we need and when it needs to be replaced.
Well, thank you for doing that. And I think that's, that's visible in these documents that people are doing that kind of analysis. I think there was at least one vehicle where it said the maintain, you know, even though you might not think based on the age that it should be replaced, the maintenance, you know, there was problems with it and the maintenance costs are indicating that it should be replaced sooner. So those are the kinds of, you know, criteria I, I, I trust our department heads to be making. And I think that's a good way of, of looking at things. Are there any other questions that folks have on the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan?
I'll move to approve City Council Resolution 24-62, which is the resolution adopting the 2025 CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Plan.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Ms. Kuednow. A further discussion. I'd like to make a couple of comments, just for us to be thinking about as we move forward. And I think, Greg, you alluded to this a little bit. When we look at the financing data that we got from Ellers, and I'm looking at Table Four in particular, which I think is the fourth page, you know, if, if we fund all of this as proposed, which includes the Sandy Beach Restaurant, which includes the library, you know, assuming that that grant comes through, we're looking at, you know, a pretty significant increase in taxes for the next five years, well, more than five years for a homeowner before it drops down. And we're also looking at not paying off this debt for more than 20 years. And so those, just seeing that on the, in the orange, the, like, the third from the last column on the right, that, that just kind of caught my attention. I'm not a real numbers person, but just seeing how much the, you know, annual taxes would go up for a property owner and then seeing that we would not be paying off the debt, now this is on the five-year plan, for more than 20 years. Those are just some things that caught my attention, and I thought we should make sure we're keeping our eye on. And it goes to, like you said, Greg, well, what are we doing in '26? What are we doing in '27? You know, this is just like, what are we doing for this five-year plan? But it, it keeps building, so we do need to keep an eye on that. On the other thing I note, I looked back at our 2023 financial statement and our audit, and we do have an unreserved fund balance, about 47% of our annual budget in our policies to try to have a 25%. So we potentially have $2 million that we could talk about, what we might want to use that for in our budget conversations over the next couple of months if we feel that we do want to fund all these things and we want to take a little bit of pressure off of the borrowing. I think there is a little bit of leeway there. Now, I, I don't, I want to make sure we have enough for a rainy day, but I think we have a cushion there that we could think about using.
Ms. Curler, the only thing I'd clarify is if we, if we took that undesignated fund balance and we actually, and we assume that we come out dead on budget at the end of this budget year, we're probably closer to 1.6 million because that's, that percentage is based on '23 expenditures and '24 expenditures are a little higher. So it's probably around 1.6 million that would keep you above, at that 25%. There is some consideration of spending down of, fund balance does affect credit rating, so it is one of the criterias that goes into it. You know, whether that would affect our AA minus rating or not, I, I don't know. Certainly spending some of it likely wouldn't, but it's, it'll have, it'll be noted in the next time we get rated. And then the only thing we want to be caution of is we use the fund balance for operational liquidity, and so we will front costs, sometimes costs, significant costs while we're waiting for borrowers to come in and then reimburse ourselves. So it would reduce that flexibility the less we have, which is just something for the council to be aware of, that the less liquidity we have, the higher likelihood we may need short-term, borrowing, short-term transitional funding of some kind to bridge a gap between when we do our annual bonding or note, notes to when that funding becomes available. So those are just, we've used fund balance in the past, it's an option that's available to us. Those are just some things to consider as we decide whether to finance these projects or pay cash for some of them through use of fund balance.
Thank you for that, I really appreciate that. And I think we'll be looking for, you know, advice from you and Sam as we move forward through the budget process. And certainly using some of that unreserved fund balance has implications, and we don't want any negative implications out of it. But I do see that we're, because we have such a good financial manager, we're doing well, you know, in our budgeting, and there may be some wiggle room there or some opportunities to help offset some of the borrowing that we're looking at. So I just want to make sure we talk about that a little bit in the coming weeks. All right, any other questions, comments on the Capital 2025 Capital Improvement Projects? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-62?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Kuednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, so that completes our council business for this evening. Our recommendations for future agendas, we are getting into budget season. So when will we hear more about your proposed budget, Drake?
The next meeting in September.
Okay.
Should be the initial budget presentation on it. At the very, at the very least, the general, the municipal side of things, the, the utility budget may take longer, but as you recall, the, it's, that's approved by resolution, not by ordinance. And so the, that gets approved much quicker than the city budget does. So, but next meeting in September, we will have a initial budget presentation.
Sounds good. And we typically have a work session after you introduce the budget, so I guess that's something we should maybe be thinking about, planning for, you know, maybe a couple-hour session, I think we've done in the past, just to go through some of the details, so.
Sure.
And then we're starting our annual city manager performance review process, so we'll have a couple of closed sessions tied to that.
On that front, the last closed session is tentatively scheduled, this is the one with Drake, is tentatively scheduled for October 28th, Monday, October 28th. Two council members said that that wasn't the most convenient date. That is what the schedule currently allows or is established for, but there's some flexibility that week, I think. So if there are preferred dates, then Monday, October 28th, just let me know, and we can find one that's rescheduled, I think. Everyone has basically provided dates, I think we can fit it in October 28th. The window would be kind of 5:30 until 8 o'clock or a little bit before that. However, there are a couple of members that have said it's not the best date. So if there's a better date, let me know.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, if October 28th is not your preference, then please let Dan know, and maybe that can be shifted. I sent out.
It is looking like that week, the final week of October prior to November 5th, I think is the first Tuesday in November. I'm not sure if that's correct, but that is when the, both the adoption of the resolution establishing pay, as well as the budget itself, would be adopted, so.
Okay.
We will have a report, I think likely in the next meeting in September, maybe first meeting in October. We're a little bit delayed, but a report on the ATV that was required by the adoption, so we will be giving a report on any incidences that we've encountered.
Since the ATV ordinance was adopted?
Was adopted.
Okay, thank you. That sounds good. And then we should be getting a report back from our consultant on our strategic planning session as well.
Yep.
Anything else from council members? Any suggestions for future agendas?
Good.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.